Mr. Clark, Leonard Clark, did you wish to provide testimony on this item? Up to two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. I have no connection with the hard-working people, human beings, with their families, who work for the City of Phoenix, except for I am a resident and I see their efforts every day. And it's really sad, and I'm not saying that you do this, but I'm asking that you do not succumb to this whole divide-and-conquer strategy that is being pulled by corporations who wish to take over everything and by people who think that government has no use. I don't like the fact that we're balancing this all on the backs of our workers here and their families. I, as a citizen, I'm sure there's plenty that disagree with me that say our city workers are lazy, do nothing, and all of these things, but I can tell you right now, I categorically deny what they say when I see a Phoenix police officer out there in the 110-degree weather like I did last summer, stopping to help somebody change their tire, when I see a city worker out there, you know, at 2:00 AM in the morning when the pipes are broken, the people that do all of this work. And they go out and they patronize our businesses. This money just doesn't stay here or flow right out. They spend money. And all of the volunteer activities that I see, the donations, the food drives, you know, there are many that want to say that the City of Phoenix and our workers are not like a family, but like some fortress separated from them, like the fake communism in China and all of these other places, but that is not the case here. Everybody can see our city workers. And I just ask that we don't succumb to, because of what's happened to our leaders at higher levels who've taken all of our jobs off to China and who want to privatize everything, like the Koch brothers like, not to give into that anger and work together on this, because this budget, this agreement should not be balanced on their backs. And I'm not going to give into that divide-and-conquer. And I thank our city workers and I also salute the workers out in front of McDonald's today in Phoenix who are also asking for more money. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. That's all the cards I had relative to Ask Me Local 2960, Unit 3. Are there anyone else who's in the audience which would like to testify on this particular one? Mr. Schmidt? You got it in. You're in. So you have up to two minutes there.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public. My name is Louis Schmidt. I'm the proud president of Ask Me Local 2384. Our sister local is 2960. To Mr. Vint, you asked, you know, that you believe that the citizens are losing and the unions are winning. There is no win when you bring less...
Diane Barker.
Excuse me? Yes, Diane Barker. Sorry. To Mr. Vint's comment that the citizens are losing here and that the unions are winning, there is no winning when you're bringing food, when you're bringing less home. There is no winning when you're losing your home. I'm not saying every city employee's losing their home, but we have employees who are affected by the bad economy. We do have a lot of single-family homes. What do the unions do? The unions arrange barbecues. When we lost Detective Hobbs, it was the police union who raised hundreds of thousands of dollars. It wasn't the city who did that. Some of you did show up, you know, when one of our members from 2960 passed away on the job last year, when the city fought to give him his death benefit on the job. It was the unions who fought to get the family, to save the family. It was the unions who did that. It wasn't the city. The city contested. It was not under, it was Mr. Cavassos. Thank goodness he's gone. When we just lost an employee two weeks, you know, three weeks ago who took his own life here, again, it wasn't the city who stepped up to go help the family. It was the union. It was our union who went to the family, to help the family. So again, unions benefit the community, they benefit the workers, because without unions, we wouldn't even be here today. They would just, this council would just strip away everything that the employees have worked so hard for. We are a community that, of employees, and we value, you know, the community that we live in. But it's frustrating for the Local 2960 to accept this contract. I don't like it, because once again, like Mr. Vint said, or like Frank said, it's a battleship. And you're putting the employees on cardboard and you're putting yourselves on steel, and we're never going to win that battle. So I'm disgusted by this budget, you know, by the process that, how this has gone, but I'm just frustrated, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt, for coming down.
I have something to say real quick.
Mayor, do you read my name, Mr. Vint? Do I get a chance to counter that?
No, you've had an opportunity to speak. And I think you have cards and other items as well. Please, sir, go ahead. Please state your name and...
My name is Shelton Nobodayan. This is not a left- or right issue. This is about a theft issue, about the city stealing tax money from people. It ultimately boils down to theft. And it's amazing that we were here just a few years ago, removed from the last time we was here with these socialist police and fire unions. We're here crying in this very room, saying that their kids are going to be out on the streets and the world's going to come to an end without the food tax. Of course, that was a lie. And I was there warning that these socialist unions, that it would be never, never, ever be enough. They'll be here two years from now doing the same nonsense over again. If tomorrow, if today you gave them a 20% raise, they'd be here two years from now saying it's not enough. It's never going to be enough. A few years ago, we conducted a Freedom of Information request on the salaries of local police. And I was stunned to find out that the average salary, the average salary of Phoenix cops, including benefits, pensions, overtime, holiday pay, and all that other junk, is over $100,000. It's completely ridiculous. And let's not forget that when they complain about their pay, they're riding around with their friends in doubles in their $65,000 Tahos that are on paved streets, mind you. And, oh, and I guess it takes two of these pirates to stop somebody for a taillight being out, you know? It's utterly ridiculous. These socialist unions also lobby the legislature to secure jobs at local schools and push out the competition for private security firms. They also scam their way via legislation to be able to sit around at every job site that the city has in their cars in 100-degree heat, yes. Let's be honest, most of their day is comprised of driving around and harassing the working public, shaking them down for revenue to pad their ridiculous, out-of-touch-with-reality pensions that they receive after a mere 20 years on the job. They will claim that their job is dangerous, but being a cop is relatively safe when compared to a job such as a logger or an ocean fisherman. Most police are killed by another passing car on the side of the road after they pull somebody over for a taillight being out.
Sir, your time is up.
Most of these police and fire are here claiming they are conservative, but they're a bunch of...
Please cut off the microphone. 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 Okay. This is, sir, please, please. All right. That's an unfortunate way to end. Obviously, everybody has a First Amendment right to make the case, but I think it's an understatement to say that he has inaccurately described what our public safety officials do on a day-to-day basis. And I'm sorry that we had to end with that speaker.
Stop whispering.
Okay. So the public hearing is now completed unless there is anybody else who would like to testify on this item. With that, we will close the public hearing. Councilman Williams, I'm going to turn it to you to have a motion on the proposed MOU between the City of Phoenix and Ask Me Local 2960, Unit 3.
I am prepared to make a motion on this proposal. I understand that we have some philosophical differences on this council, on what's important and brings benefits to the city, but I think, over time, we have demonstrated a pretty strong support for many of the things that are being proposed that we could cut. And I think it's foolish to continue your hopes when we need to stabilize our workforce. We need to give our employees the confidence to know that this is settled, that we can move forward, and hopefully, in the next year, things will begin to improve and we can make adjustments in the future. So therefore, I am going to approve the MOU between the City of Phoenix and Ask Me Local 2960, better known as Unit 3, as proposed.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams made a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Valenzuela has a second in the motion. I will now turn to members of the council if they have questions or comments relative to this item. Councilman DeCiccio, please.
And, you know, without, I'm going to be voting against this, but there's something else that, I'm glad all the labor groups are here. I just want you to understand what's going on, though, too. If you look at, you know, I'll address it one time so that way you get at least an idea of what's really happening at the City of Phoenix, it's going to impact you, and it's not going to get better. So when I keep talking about the structural deficit within the City of Phoenix, there's a reason why there are only two cities that are facing this economic climate and this economic morass, is that it's Glendale and the City of Phoenix, two in the entire valley. Remember, Phoenix has always been known of having good management practices. Those management practices have really caused this problem and this financial problem that all of you are now having to deal with, and you're not going to just deal with it this time. You're going to deal with it again and again and again until that structural deficit is fixed here at the City of Phoenix. The next big shoe to drop, the next big shoe, is going to be the mismanagement of the property tax. That mismanagement has caused a forecast of less than a year, less than a year, of a $100 million shortfall. Now, who do you think's going to have to make that up and where is that money going to be coming from? There are a few of us up here that have been calling this out, because it's the mayor and council that led the city into that direction. Can no longer blame staff anymore, because everybody knows what's going on, but policy decisions have created that mismanagement, created that shortfall, and you can't be off by over $100 million. Just can't be. The City of Phoenix had forecasted that we were going to hit a $70 million reserve in our secondary property tax in the year 2022. Well, we're going to get almost zero in 2018. That's a significant drop if you look at where the curves were. You can't be off by that much. You can't be off by that much. So there is a lot more going on here at the City of Phoenix. Phoenix has, this is the second-highest revenue year ever in the City of Phoenix, second-highest ever, and there's still a $38 million shortfall. You should be questioning where this money is going. You should be asking numbers. I mean, I've been trying to get numbers myself here at the City of Phoenix and still haven't been able to get it for what 104 positions mean. Vacant positions that have been vacant for a while. How long have they been vacant for? So you're going to be seeing this more and more, and what's going to end up happening, it's going to create more pressure on you and your jobs and your income in the future, because the City of Phoenix is refusing to look at this. It's actually the staff that no longer bears responsibility. It's all the people up here that are going to be responsible for that. And I've been predicting, because of this shortfall, we're going to see another credit rating drop. I hope it doesn't happen, but when you have that kind of a shortfall, it's going to happen. So what's going to happen is there's going to be a decision whether or not you're going to have to give more, or there's going to have to be a raising of taxes. Well, I can tell you right now, I'm not going to raise the property tax, and there are a few people up here that aren't going to do that either. So guess where that money's going to come from? You should be demanding, demanding information, demanding things be done better, and look at, put things on the table as to where we can go in the future. And it requires, it's going to, and I believe we have the competent people to do that here, but we've got to be willing to do that. That means everyone needs to be at the table as we move forward. There is definitely a structural deficit that was created in 2008 and got created again in 2012, got fixed right around 2010, but again, started created again. Unless that deficit is fixed, unless the City of Phoenix is put on the right direction, you're going to see these problems. Remember, Phoenix used to have the best reputation, right? Why is it now we're compared to Glendale? Why? It's because there are only two cities facing this problem. So it's going to continue on. I feel bad for all of you here, and it's going to, you know, and because all of you are going to be asked to give more as time goes on. I think it's important for all of us to have gotten these simple numbers here. Think about it, just asking for numbers. What are those 104? Come up with a plan. See how much money is really out there. And I, you know, I think police, no, I think, I believe strongly, police is different, you know, whether or not they should or shouldn't be. You can always debate, but you're down 521 officers. They're being asked to. Last week, we had testimony that one of our precincts had no coverage because of one call. So how do you do that to one department? Sometimes, there is a difference. Not always. Police was at full force, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, but they aren't at full force. And for those of you that want to think that they should be treated the same, they shouldn't be treated the same in this scenario. And it's not meant to be a slap on anyone else's face or anyone else's direction. It's just meant to realize that there is a difference this time out. So it's just an acceptance. That doesn't mean that all of you can't get something out of something, you know? It just means that sometimes those areas in government or those areas in any organization are different. Now, if Ask Me, if you were that short and you were having major, significant problems, you should be treated differently. So that's what's occurring here. I feel bad for most of you here, but you're going to be coming back over and over again. And if you think this is your best deal that you can get, great. I really think that you're going to be looked at in the future, because they've already predicted another deficit for next year, and they're going to be asked to raise taxes here. And you know a few of us aren't going to do that, because we've been calling this out and wanting it fixed for a long time. Thanks, Mayor.
I think very much, I think with the policy that the council was talking about is that with our property tax, a portion of it goes to the primary payment, a portion of it goes to a secondary payment. The primary payment goes to the general fund, which of course pays for police, fire, parks, libraries, the core city services. The policy of the City of Phoenix during the worst of the economic times has been to increase the portion of the property tax that goes to the primary so that we could fund police, fire, parks, and libraries. I think it's the policy that the councilman is referring to. I'm going to turn to our city manager and ask, why is the city, why did the city, in your opinion, why did the city council, city management recommend and ultimately the council adopt a policy to increase the portion of the property tax that goes to the primary and therefore, police, fire, parks, and libraries, core city services? Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, they should also answer the question I asked, is how did we get, how did the forecast get so far off? It's not off by a few percentages, it's off by a lot.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Mr. City Manager?
That's the problem.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman DeCiccio, the primary property tax is about, almost 15% of our general fund budget, it's about $140 million. The council took a position that we should maximize levy the most primary property taxes possible in order to have resources to fund our fire stations, our police stations, senior centers, all those things. So those resources coming through the primary property tax are supporting city services to the extent, the greatest extent possible. Any decrease in the primary levy would decrease general fund revenues, which would increase the deficit that we would have had this year. So that's the important side. As for the secondary, I believe what Councilman DeCiccio is referring to is the projections in the future for our secondary property tax reserve. And what is shown is that based on two things. Number one, property values did not increase to the extent that economists projected. That was the smaller part. The far greater part of the issue was that interest rates on our, interest rates on debt increased far greater than anyone projected, and so therefore, the refinancing savings that were expected are not possible. So therefore, in the next three years, we're going to have to have, continue to look at that as we look at our secondary side, which pays the debt on our facilities that we have taken bonds on.
Mayor, may I interject here?
You have a follow-up question, please?
Yeah, it's more than a follow-up question. Remember, this report was generated April of 2013, and we're in April 2014, and in December, we started realizing we had a problem. So this projection didn't change that much, whether the interest rates, there was a 1% change in the interest rate market. It doesn't create a drain of over $100 millions of dollars. We had, the reason that the City of Phoenix maintained their bonding rate, and we had $291 in reserve, and that reserve was meant to keep us moving forward. So the forecast can't be...
Your friendly correction, $291 million, not $291.
No, it was $291 million in reserve is that we had.
Million.
Correct. Million. What did I say?
Just $291.
Oh, $291. Well, that's a little more than that. Thank you, Mayor, for correcting it. But you can't, it's the forecasting of that, it's the projections that everything is then based on after that, and that is where the problem lies. You can't be off that much. It doesn't work. It just doesn't work that way. You have to, then that means your forecasting assumptions were way off-base at the beginning, which they obviously were.
All right. Thank you very, thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that from my end, because Councilman brings it up a lot, which is his right to do so, but I wanted to make sure to clarify that the policy was put in place so that we would maximize the amount of resource during the worst of the economic times, maximize the amount of resources for public safety, parks, libraries, the key city services that we provide. Any other comments or questions by this council? Councilman Gallego?
Since we're talking about some of our Ask Me units, and we talked about that the cuts were very deep to police, I am seeing deep cuts everywhere. This morning, I was meeting with the Parks Director over some of my concerns about dead trees and streetscape maintenance, and they mentioned to me that we have gone from 90 individuals doing that work to 21. So that's incredibly deep cuts, and we are seeing that across the city. So I think that, I express my, I mean, I'm sorry to everyone, it's hurting for all of our employees, and I have that sympathy across the board, but it is police, but it is elsewhere as well. So this is a very deep problem we have here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments in advance of the vote? We have a vote then. The motion was to approve the MOU between the City of Phoenix and Ask Me Local 2960, Unit 3. We have a motion. We have a second. We lost a council member, so I'm going to wait till the council member gets back. Left, right, at the wrong time.
Sorry.
All right. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. So that motion passes on a six to three vote. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing of the MOU between the City of Phoenix and the Phoenix Firefighter Association, IAFF Local 493. I will now open that public hearing. Do we have any cards on our IAFF proposal? Let me take, make sure I get these cards organized. Marshall Pimentel, are you here? All right. So I don't have a card from you, but I had a lot of people donating time to you, so I'll assume that the card got lost somewhere, but you...
I'm actually forwarding to, or should be on the...
Okay. It is S4, but I think you're on item S5. That'll hold off till S5. And make sure we get a card, a yellow card from you as well, unless...
Oh, I do turn...
Oh, I see. It's the people donating time to you that put S4. I got it. All right. So those are S5. I apologize. Okay. So I have, let's see, I have Leonard Clark. Did you wish to testify on the MOU, proposed MOU between Phoenix and IAFF Local 493? Up to two minutes.
I just wanted to say thank you. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm from Phoenix. Have no connection to the firefighters, except when I'm in a life-or-death situation or one of my loved ones, et cetera, they're the first ones there besides the officers. I believe that it's, if they agree with this, then if they think that it's fine, this, I mean, they don't think it's fine, but, you know, despite the fact that it is on the backs of the working-class families that are in this group of workers, if they're going to go along with it, I go along with it, and I would just like to also thank them, because I don't ever usually get an opportunity. I see them driving by their fire trucks, doing a lot of things to keep us safe, and thank you. And if they're for it, I'm for it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Ms. Barker, did you wish to testify on this item? Up to two minutes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually said what I wanted to say, it was more of a position thing, and was still wanting to find out the revenues in those positions. I'd like to have my councilmen support me. I've asked staff to get me the real estate owned by the city. They said it's a big job, they only have maybe half, I said, by Friday, I want to see what you have. If not, I'm going to put in a public request on it. And I know you've been wanting this, Councilman, so if you'll support me Friday, we need to know what the city has or the most of it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Mr. Vint, did you wish to provide testimony on this item? Up to two minutes, please.
Yes, I really do. It's getting amazing here, how they think that money grows on trees. I've said that 100 times, but if we would have had, like Sal said, and boy, he's getting to be a genius, if people before you had a thought and done the right thing, we wouldn't be here today. You can't pick and choose who you're going to give a raise to or who you're going to rip off. And I'm getting damn tired, as a public, as the public, one of the public, and the citizens, what if you had no citizens? Do you think you would need a fire department? Would you need a city council? Would you need a police department? You would need nothing. What you're going to do, you're going to drive the public out of the City of Phoenix. I'm planning as hard as I can to get the hell out of here. I don't want to go to Glendale. I'll go to any other little city where you're appreciated and not ripped off. This is a disaster. I have been owner of a few businesses. I won't tell you how many, and I'm not going to tell you which ones I'm still involved with, because they try to destroy me. Patrick Ravenstein and a few other people tried to destroy me and destroying my property. I can't even ride my scooty in my yard anymore because of the three-quarter rocks that they made me put in, won't settle down. I got a miniature golf cart with eight-inch wheels, six inches wide, it just digs a damn hole. But you don't give a damn. Just the hell with the citizens. Praise the fire department, praise the city policemen, which is wonderful. We need them, but when they took the job, I guess they knew what the job was going to be. You help people, and that's what citizens do. Citizens help everybody. Again, if there was no citizens, nobody would be here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vint. I appreciate your testimony. Next speaker will be Pete Goryas, President of IAFF Local 493.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I really didn't come with any prepared comments. I just really wanted to make myself available for you if you had any questions. But I will say that our members did take a vote to ratify the contract that took 1.6 in reductions the first year and 0.9 the second, on top of the 1.6 we already have. Nobody wants to take cuts, but we understand the fiscal realities. And I know that there've been some comments about these vacant positions, or I also know, and it was pointed out in the budget hearings, and it was pointed out in the budget books that went out, we got it, I don't know why the, and I'm sure the council got it. Many of those vacant positions are offset with cost savings as a result of the vacant positions. To get rid of the vacant positions, it'd be a wash, because you'd lose the savings. I don't know, maybe if someone didn't hire their employees from a temp agency, they could have walked you through that. But the point is this, it wasn't an easy thing for our members to do, but we understand in good times, we grow together, and when we have times like this, then we have to make sacrifices. We just weren't willing, because we saw the financial circumstances, and we weren't willing to cut everyone else so that we could get a raise. We need the streets, we drive on the streets, we drink the water, our guys coach the little leagues on the city fields, and the other employees. We need the mechanics, we need the dispatchers, we need, and we're a family. And I mean that on a city level. And so if I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goryas, for testifying. Appreciate it very much. Any questions for Mr. Goryas? Thank you so much.
Mayor, I just, not a comment to Mr. Goryas, but to staff, I'm still waiting for the, why guess?[1730.73] why guess? Why not just have staff provide the information on those 104 vacant positions? Not on your end, no.
I got it. I could send it to you. Everyone else got it.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Well, why don't you send it then? Because I don't have, do I have it, Ed? Do I have the information on those 104 vacant positions? The value and how long they've been and what positions they are?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we did send a report just before this meeting stating that the value of 104 positions would be between $7 and $8 million.
How much?
I would just say about vacancies, though.
Oh.
We did-
It's the individual parts, too.
Yeah. We did provide our first recommendations on what vacancies might be cut in the $29 million service cut recommendation. Those recommendations contained about 120 vacancies in there. So it's important that we not think of vacancies as just existing outside of what it is that we do. And so every vacancy is attached to a service that should be provided and that's what we're trying to communicate as best we can.
So that report was provided, I was in my office. What time was it provided to the council offices?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we've been trying to pull that together given everything else going on. We were just able to provide it now. So it's not a surprise that you didn't know it. We just put it at the places.
Okay. So 104 vacant positions represent $7 to $8 million approximately and we still don't know what those positions are so that people could look at it and see how long they've been vacant. So are we gonna be able to get that report?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, you have to walk through the vacancies from the very beginning. The first thing is to look at how many are in the general fund. Then we do accounting for vacancies in the budget so that we're not putting too much money in the budget for positions that are vacant. So about 340 positions are already accounted for in what we call salary savings. So the first 340 vacancies that would be cut would be a wash to the budget. Then the next group were attached to services that we recommended if there weren't revenues or concessions, that we would cut about $29 million of services. Within that list of services were about 120 vacancies. And so that would be the first group that we would say management would recommend to the council. If you wanted to cut vacancies, we would go to that list of services there and say within that is the vacancies. The remainder are in services that we would not recommend cutting. So for example, in our street transportation department, we have many, many street maintenance workers. We have unfortunately about 22 vacant street maintenance worker positions right now. Those street maintenance worker positions, while they're vacant, we would not recommend cutting them because they are responsible for crack sealing and fog sealing and all sorts of work that is important for us to continue to keep our streets maintained. And we're actually behind in our maintenance as it is. We're on about a 60-year cycle and we should be on a 35-year cycle. So if we were to cut those vacancies, we would be telling the public that we're gonna be even longer before we get to your streets. So that's, that's why it's, the challenge is to do that. And I would say in terms of vacancies, the first group would be in the list that management proposed as part of the $29 million cut.
So let me be very clear. I mean, this council needs to have that kind of information, Ed. Why don't you just delineate every single one of those positions and how long they've been vacant? You can do it in the next week or two? Just get that information. We've requested that, this council has. I mean, just because it just sits up here doesn't mean with a stack of paper that everyone knew it was up here.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, I did not intend for it to be something that you were not aware of and I wouldn't say that. It's taken us time and we are working on that. The important thing is that we need to make sure that we give you, rather than just a list of vacancies, we need to show what those vacancies are. So my example of the street maintenance workers, rather than just saying we've got 22 vacant positions in streets, we need to talk about what those positions are slated to do for the residents of Phoenix so that you're making a decision in the context of what services we would be giving up for the future.
And I think that's all good and fine, but we need to know how long they've been vacant too.
Understood.
And what they are. And so now, this draws an even better picture of where we're at because I was thinking it's gonna be around 8 million, got 7 to 8 million, so we got that in there. Not that every position would be cut either. So now we're getting more information as a council. Just the other day, we received information on what the lobbying costs and the public relations and all that was right around $5.4 million. Again, this goes back into the discussion of looking at non-essential strategic cuts that Councilman Gates was talking about yesterday and where we can draw extra income and extra savings to the City of Phoenix. This all needs to be put on the table. There are $4 million that Councilman Gates has identified that staff needs to look at. So you draw, let's say this is $7 million, you've got $5.6 million in travel, dining and all those other things that the city has, PR, lobbying, you add Councilman Gates's $4 million and then the fact is we can ask for those one-time, those one-time expenses be used with one-time sale of property. That forces city staff then to be out there looking at property. It shouldn't take a year and a half for you to come back to us and then say, "Oh yeah, we're gonna be sending something out now." It doesn't take a year and a half to do that. So what I'm saying is we now have the potentials and the making of a plan in place that could save millions and millions of dollars. We've already identified close to over $15 million and you put in the property sale in there for those one-time expenses, now we have something in place. It may not be exactly what you wanted, but it starts fixing our structural deficit and it starts putting, no, I'm not done, Mayor. And it starts putting in place a plan where the public can see it in a transparent way.
Thank you very much, Council. These are points that obviously you've made a few times this evening. Brian Cross is opposed to the item but not wishing to speak. Joel Davidson is opposed to the item, not wishing to speak. And Victor Ben-Gosia is opposed to the item, not wishing to speak. Is there anyone else who's here in the audience that would like to speak on the issue of the proposed MOU between City of Phoenix and IAFF Local 493? Louis Schmidt?
Mayor, real quick, if I could correct-
You might. Was this the right, was this the right one to talk on?
Sorry about that. Those three individuals, I think, were for the next item also, for 2384.
I will put them off and get them for the next one. Okay, I apologize. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, did you wish to testify on the firefighter MOU?
Yes, I'm just gonna take, thank you, Mayor. What I would like from this council, the ones who are, whatever you're, you know, the ones who are voting no, please let your constituents, the city employees, we do live in your districts too, so give us why you're voting no. You're affecting families with your vote. So I think the public and the employees, everybody in this room, should understand why you're voting no. And if you do vote no on this one, I mean, there was an agreement that was signed, you know, by a couple of councilmembers that they wouldn't cut certain divisions of the city employees. So again, if you're gonna vote no, back it up with some, something so that the public can understand why you're voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. Anyone else wish to testify on this item? With that, then I will close the public hearing. I'll also turn it over to Councilman Williams. You have a motion on S4, which is a proposed resolution regarding the MOU.
Yes, I wish to move approval for the MOU between the City of Phoenix and the Phoenix Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 493, also known as Unit 5.
Second.
We have a motion and a, any second. Any comments from members of this council on the firefighter MOU? Vice Mayor.
I'll just say in response to that, I said publicly, really, I think before this process started, I wouldn't cut the pay of police and fire or their support staffs and so I'm not going to. So I'm voting no. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. So the MOU agreement with firefighters passes on a 6 to 3 vote. Thank you everyone who testified on that, on that item. Next item, S5, which is Unit 2. City Manager, what's your recommendation, what to do?
Thank you, Mayor. On S5, I believe we have requested to withdraw that item because late, or early yesterday, we came to an agreement with Unit 2 and therefore what is before you is, are the add-ons for Unit 2, which is a public hearing on their proposed MOU and then a vote on their proposed MOU. So S5 is not necessary.
Mayor, do you need a motion?
Okay, so we have a motion to withdraw S5.
I'll move.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call. All in favor of the motion to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item passes. So then what's your recommendation on 5.1? This is a public hearing on Unit 2? And then? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is Item S5.1, which is a public hearing on the proposed MOU between the City of Phoenix and ASME Local 2384, which is Unit 2. I will now open the public hearing on Unit 2. Okay. City clerks indicated some people put in cards for S5, some on S5.1. I'm assuming that you're here to talk about the Unit 2 proposed MOU, so I will take comments on both. Mr. Pimentel, I think this was the item you wanted to testify on and you have about four other individuals who have donated their time, so you have up to 10 minutes, but you don't have to take 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. We're here talking about the contracts right now and the $8 million savings, more savings, we're coming up with more numbers. This is an item that we just were discussing and it's just unfounded that here we are in negotiations which started back in December and we're now finding different places, different revenues, different money and we're trying to negotiate a contract without the, all of the information. Maybe it wasn't construed right or maybe they're not getting it across right. I don't, I don't know what the difference is, but we're trying to negotiate a contract without all the information being at hand. That's what it seems like on the surface. So we have a fact finder and we're trying to negotiate in good faith, but those are some of the items that are being put on the table right now and we're trying to see what's going on. I know we're, we have some contracts that we're voting no, we're voting, you know, we don't want these things. The general fund, we're, we're looking at, you know, what's the difference? We hear a public comment on trying to separate or change the way we look at sworn and unsworn. A lot of us agree. There's a separation. Some people are saying we should be separated. When you're looking at things, you know, you have sworn budget, you have police and fire. That costs a certain amount of money to maintain. And on the other side of the fence, you have unsworn budget, which includes all the other services, projects, streets repairs, 911, clean water, parks, senior centers, et cetera. So there's a lot of things that we need to look at and we're trying to figure out, you know, how much money does each one of these things cost to maintain? When I do my own budget, you know, I'm looking at gas, food, water, clothes, my home. And then that's versus cable, cellphone, moving, dining out. It's the same thing. We're trying to figure out a balance here with things that are most important to us, not just us as city employees, but also as the general public and what we're spending our money on. Also all the projects that are going on. I just heard, I don't know if it's true or not, but Melrose, we want that arch to be lit up now. In a time when we don't have money, why are we looking at spending more money on things that are frivolous at this time? There's a lot of maintenance that we're behind on. Last week's meeting, we had some people talking about the amount of overtime that they make and they were doing some comparisons with overtime. The other three units, 1, 2, and 3, haven't worked overtime in I don't know how long. We are told not to do any overtime, but we're neglecting those services that we need to perform. Those are streets repairs, those are traffic signals repairs, those are water services, all those things that we could be doing with overtime, but we don't get to perform those things because it's not in our budget. But those are the things that the public wants repaired. Street repairs, crack seal, you know, bike lanes, Melrose being lit up, who knows? But we want overtime to be able to repair those things. And I don't see why we're not able to do that if everybody else is able to put in that time to help with the understaffing issues, which we have quite a bit of. Here we are gonna cut quite a bit of vacant positions and we're understaffed. And the thing the public needs to realize is when we cut those positions and we reduce and we're understaffed, we're doing jobs that we wouldn't normally do. I know for a fact that our job, we do dispatching. That isn't part of my regular duties, but we're stepping up and we're doing that. But to me, that's another cut. That's another cut in pay because now I have to perform two different jobs and still get paid the same amount of money. I don't understand that, but a lot of the times the public doesn't realize that these understaffing issues hurt us more so than just the cuts that are on the table. Also, we're, you know, at our level, we see a lot of things when things go wrong. We put blame, we point fingers. Why? We need to come together and find a solution. We already know the blame, we already know where the problems are. We need to move forward and let's find out what's going on. We have another year coming up. We have pensions, we have other items on the table that we're gonna be discussing and we need to see what's going on. We need to solve our problems, not point blame and try to find out who's at fault. We just need to pick up the pace and everybody do their job correctly. That's what we do. And everybody, all the way up, you know, let's lead by example and show that that's what we can do and come together at the table and negotiate. So you're not asking us to give more. Sometimes that's not the feeling with the low morale issue. You're actually asking and it, it seems sometimes it's pretty poignant that you're asking people to move on, move somewhere else, retire. That's not what we wanna do, but I'm afraid that, you know, pushing in this direction, that's what's gonna happen. And we're gonna lose more and we're gonna lose talent in places where we need it the But I heard we're gonna be here again and again and again, talking about a decrease in city services, a decrease in revenues. We spent or made $47 million more this year than we did last year. But how much were savings or how much was in revenues? Did we save more or did we make more in revenues? And how much more have we spent in that same time versus last year? How much was wasted this year versus last year? These are some of the other things that a lot of people are having questions about. What are we doing about that so that we can move forward? So yes, you will be seeing us here again. The City of Phoenix employees are not gonna go anywhere. We are gonna stay here and we're gonna look for ways to help out the City of Phoenix because we have a commitment. That's why we took this job. These are our homes, these are our families. The City of Phoenix is an extension of my family. All my coworkers, everybody that I talk to, I work with on a daily basis. I talk to them after hours, we see each other all the time, we know each other's families, our kids, we know what's going on here. And we're willing to help, but these cuts are hurting, morale is hurting and we need to find a way to get out of this hole. And whatever we could do, we will do that, but we can't do it alone. The public needs to understand that we cannot do it alone. Everybody needs to take a hit and we all need to pick up the pace, whatever it is, whether it's a suggestion or whatnot, whether we could save in other places. But the city also needs to realize that if you want more PD, you want more fire, you want your streets repaired and everything else, it's gonna cost a little bit more. Costs are not going down, they're going up and unfortunately, you know, that's, that's just the way it is. We understand that, but we haven't even gotten a cost of living raise in some time and we're going backwards, not forward. And it's hard to balance our budgets and our families, but we will stay and stick it out and we will be here for the long haul. Thank you.
Thank you very much.